Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 1,231st Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, let's call the roll.
Mr. Banjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Tenaro is absent, Mr. Dros is absent. Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Herr Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow?
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mr. Jacob Uhazi, and we also have Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. They will be giving us background information on these items, and we will give a petitioner opportunity to come forward and speak, and if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on these items, we'll also give them a chance before we make our decision. With that, we're going to jump right into the Public Hearing section of our agenda. Item number one.
Is petition 2025-05-02-10 submitted by Tissio Architects requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.59 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to expand the existing veterinary hospital at 278-488-Five Mile Road to include the building at 27492-Five Mile Road located on the northeast corner of Five Mile Foe Street in the southeast quarter of Section 13.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As it was said, this is the build in addition connecting the two existing buildings, expanding the existing veterinary hospital at 27492-Five Mile Road. The parcel is located on the northeast corner of Five Mile Road and Fout Street. The current zoning is C1 local business with the rear of the property being P parking. To the west of the petition site across Fout Street is a vacant property also zoned C1 and P. To the north is residential property zoned N1 neighborhood. To the east is a vacant property also zoned NM1 neighborhood multifamily. South across Five Mile is our residential properties zoned N2 to the southwest and N1 to the southeast. The petition involves connecting these two buildings. The two adjoining properties are under common ownership now. Together, the properties combined for about .54 acres with approximately 147 feet along frontage along Five Mile Road by 160 feet along Fout Street. The property 27495-Five Mile Road is the building to the east and consists of 3,113 square feet of commercial space currently occupied by the True Health Veterinary Hospital. 27492-Five Mile Road is the building to the west and consists of a 1,737 square foot vacant commercial space that was formerly used as a realtor building. The petition waiver is to expand the use of the veterinary clinic under Section 6.59 of the zoning ordinance to... And that would expand both the waiver use to both buildings and the addition between them. The addition would add 23 square feet to the existing between the buildings. Once complete, the building would have a combined area of 4,873 square feet. Parking will largely remain unchanged with the exception that three parking spots would be removed and restripped to prevent parking vehicles having to back up into the entranceways. The site will have a total of 25 parking spaces and is only required to have eight by the zoning ordinance. The petition application did not include any changes to signage or landscaping on the site. Elevation plans show a 12 and 1/2-foot tall addition that would match the existing white brick with metal cap on the top of the veterinary office. And the two buildings would are at different elevations, and to account for this, the floor plan shows a ramp located inside the addition that slopes downward towards the realtor building to the west. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I have some correspondence I can read as well.
Yes, if you could read that out, please.
From the Treasurer's Office, "All taxes have been paid on this property." Signed, Susan Nash, City Treasurer. From the Department of Inspection, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, these two separate parcels must be combined before the proposed addition can connect the two buildings. This department has no further objections to the petition." Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspections. From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal." Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Fire Department, "This office has reviewed the site petition submitted in connection with a request to construct in addition to an existing commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal. A further detailed review will take place when the division receives an official plan set." Signed, Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. From the Engineering Department, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcels are assigned the addresses of 27488 and 27492-Five Mile Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently served by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main as well as private stormwater sewer. Utility information specifically stormwater detention calculations have not been submitted with the drawings, but we do not believe there will be any adverse effects on the proposed project. Three, after the subject parcel is transferred ownership, the developer shall contact the Assessor's Office to combine the parcels prior to receiving final permit closeout." Signed, David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. And that is all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Ms. Ventura?
Jacob, so as I look at these floor plans, it appears that only minor modifications are being made to the interior of the westernmost building.
Correct.
And the eastern building is going to stay exactly the way it is?
Yes.
And do I recall that the public entrance is going to be in the easternmost building, where it is today and really not any public access?
That's my understanding. Most of the public access would be contained to the existing building. I think there would be one or two exam rooms that would also be accessible for additional space, but the vast majority of it would be employed.
Okay, and then flipping down to the, if I can do that here, elevations. Reason I'm having a hard time doing that. Do I understand that the elevations of the southern elevation of the westernmost building is going to stay exactly the way it is? We're adding three glass panels to the eastern building.
The, at the addition?
Pardon me?
To the addition? Like in the addition?
To the front of the eastern building. Or is that existing?
I thought that was existing.
It's all existing.
I thought the only...
Ben Tissio, Tissio Architects. The two buildings will remain exactly the way it is. The only work will be the three and a half...
Breezeway?
Three foot nine inch space between the two connecting them, and yes, the one point of entry for both building will be controlled by the reception area in the easterly building.
Mr. Wolschow is going to scold us for being out of order here, but thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for giving your...
I'll go out and start again if you'd like.
Thank you for the introduction. Mr. Ventura, does that answer your questions?
It does answer my questions, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. Now we'll go to the petitioner.
(Inaudible).
Good evening.
Good evening. Ben Tissio, Tissio Architects, 19815 Farmington Road. Again, we're hopeful for your support tonight to put another vacant building, if you will, back on the payroll for the city. I did want to add one note. I noticed it's missing on our site plan. The existing real estate sign will be removed and some landscaping will be put in its place. I noticed it wasn't stated that on the drawings, but that will be on the construction documents that come to the city.
That's appreciated. Thank you. Is there any questions for our petitioner's representative? And just a note, the owner of the property, the veterinary themselves is, was at our study meeting, and she was able to answer some questions there, but she is out of town.
Out of country, actually, yes.
For tonight, so...
With her son, yes.
So you are taking duties as her representative, so...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for petitioner's representative?
Mr. Chair, just probably a simple question.
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Then is there doors between these two buildings that will close, or it's going to be always open between the two?
It'll be always open. It's actually an extension of a corridor, but we do have a new door that will be in the westerly building that'll prevent the public from going beyond the exam room there.
Okay, so between the two, that's no fire issue?
No.
You need a closure?
It'll be codes. Everything is fine.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any other questions for petitioner? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Sir, feel free to come forward to our podium. We'll give you a chance to speak. We just asked you for your name and address for our record.
My name is Jonathan Demetrio. My address is 15410 Foe Street. That's just three houses down from there. I just presented a small organization of thoughts for myself, so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to express my full support for the zoning ordinance that will allow the expansion of veterinary office owned and operated by, in my opinion, a remarkable member of community, Ned. Ned is the husband of Mary, the owner's. Ned is more than just a business owner. He's a living example of what makes Livonia such a special place: grit, heart, and a commitment to community. He immigrated to the U.S. from somewhere in Europe. Honestly, I wish I remembered exactly where, but I forget exactly where. He came here chasing love, and although it didn't pan out, he stayed and built something even more meaningful. He was already a trained veterinarian in his home country, and instead of giving up when he arrived here with limited English and no local credentials, he worked tirelessly to get recertified in the U.S. as a vet. That alone says something about his determination and passion for the field. And now he owns and operates a veterinary practice that provides an essential service to our neighborhood. And it's already a thriving business. It's already booked. Everybody knows about the vets around here. It's not like you can just call and get in that day, so it's very much needed, especially me owning lots of dogs and cats, you know, and not so much anymore as we get older, but... So I'm loving having him there. It's so nice, because I used to have to drive 40 minutes into Canton just because that was the availability for my pets. Before Ned took over the property, the building sat vacant and deteriorating for as far as I can remember, to be honest. Apart from that, the one on the west side where that guy John who passed away, and, you know, the community wasn't necessarily too thrilled about what he was doing there, and I know there was a lot of issues. Either way, you know, nobody really enjoyed what was happening, and the fact that Ned's taking that, you know, wants to do what he wants to do there is, you know, something... Everybody in our street has totally supported. Even when I talked to my neighbors, I thought they were coming, and they're like, we go, why wouldn't you pass? And I'm like, well, you still got to come and show support if that's what you want to have happen, you know, so surprised they're not here. Anyways, all the neighbors, everybody's for it, and they love it, and he's such a good person. Like I said, that one building was deteriored. Those buildings have been deteriorating for years, especially that sign you mentioned that's going to get taken down with the 1800, like quick sell or something. I mean, that is, as far as you guys can probably remember, that sign has been there, and it's just been getting worse and worse. So I so look forward to just getting it beautiful where it needs to be. The structure next door, the one he's recently acquired and wants to connect to his existing practice, was in the same shape. Was in the same shape. Two eyesores, two missed opportunities, but Ned saw potential where others saw decay. And through hard work and investment, he turned one of those buildings into a vibrant, much-needed veterinary clinic. Now he's ready to do it again, expand his services, improve our neighborhood, and meet the growing demand. It's not just about aesthetics or business, it's about someone who genuinely cares. He's the kind of person remembers your pet's name, answers questions after hours, and helps families through some of the toughest moments they face. Ned, I don't think he's asking for a handout, he's asking for the opportunity to keep investing in our city. He owns both buildings, he's already proven what he's capable of. All he needs now is the city's support to take this next step. I truly believe Livonia is better with Ned and his wife in it. This expansion brings more services, more jobs, and more vitality to our area. I urge you to approve the ordinance and support someone who's already given so much to this community. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Demetrio. That was an excellent testimony for the area and for this business. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Mr. Tissio, is there anything else that you'd like to say before we make our decision?
No. Thank you for the kind comments. I know that the owner had left a large corporation that had veterinary services, and frankly, he left because he couldn't give the proper care to the animals. That's why he wanted to get his own business.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. If there's no further comments from the public, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. At this request to expand a veterinary clinic at 27488-Five Mile Road shall be approved subject to the following condition. Number one, that the site plan identified as sheet number P1, floor plan identified as sheet number P2, and elevation plan identified as sheet number P3 dated May 5, 2025, prepared by Tissio Architects Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the operation of the subject use shall not include the overnight boarding or care of animals. Number three, that there shall be no dumpster, no outside dumpster located on the site, and all trash must be contained within the building except on the day trash is scheduled for removal. Number four, that all animal remains, medical and animal waste, shall be properly disposed of. Number five, that adequate soundproofing shall be installed to the extent necessary to ensure the elimination of all noise from the building. Number six, that the use of open or outdoor runways, kennels, or pens are prohibited. Number seven, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number eight, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number nine, the two separate parcels shall be combined into a single lot. Number 10, that the specific plan referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number 11, pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. We have, let's see, support, or excuse me, we have approving resolution made by Mr. Long, support by Mr. Banjero. I think the resolution was longer than the construction or the breezeway that's being constructed. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Herr Magno votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. This will go on to City Council with an approving recommendation, and we wish you luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
That takes care of the Public Hearing section of the agenda. We now move on to Misselene's items, item number two.
Petition 2025-05-08-06 submitted by Richard Neiman requesting site plan approval under Section 13.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to construct a 4,164-square-foot warehouse garage at the 6 Mid Plaza 29441 Six Mile Road located on the, in the northeast quarter of Section 14.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi?
Good evening. This is request to construct a 20-foot-tall, approximately 4,000-square-foot warehouse garage at the rear of the site for the tenants of the commercial strip located on the south side of Six Mile Road between Middle Belt and Oportor Street. The existing zoning is C2 general business. To the west of the property is the Bethel Baptist Church in the RUF zoning. To the north across Six Mile are storefronts within the C2 district. To the east are properties in the C2 district as well, and south is the Five Credit Union The parcel is irregularly shaped and measures 1.60 acres in size with approximately 120 feet of frontage along Six Mile Road by depth of 290 feet. The site contains an existing 8,110-square-foot commercial strip center with approximately 20 parking spaces in the front of the property and additional 70 parking spaces that are accessible via a 22-foot driveway. Some of the existing tenants include a nail salon and bridal shop. A new site plan was submitted since our last meeting that you guys have a paper copy of. It's the same basic layout, it just has some of the things that we talked about, adding the parking striping as well as some landscape details. The proposed warehouse will include four separate 1,041-square-foot garage spaces for a total area of 4,164 square feet. The garages will be positioned behind the existing nail salon and bridal shop on Six Mile Road. According to Section 7.23, accessory structures in the C2 district must be customarily incidental to the principal permitted use on the site. A storage garage for the storage of commercial vehicles used by businesses or other permitted activity when located on the same lot therein and occupying not more than 25% of the area of such lot shall be considered a legal accessory building, which was complied with. Accessory uses to those permitted in the section include assembly, repair, and storage, which is clearly incidental to the conduct of the permitted use. The proposed warehouse satisfies the setback requirements of the C2 side yard and rear yard. The site plan shows the garage is setback 10 feet from the existing property line. The proposed warehouse garage satisfies the height requirements of the C2 zoning district as the proposed warehouse garage is 20 feet. Vehicle access will remain unchanged from an existing curb cut off Six Mile Road. Circulation appears to be the same after the garage is built. The number of parking spaces in the rear of the building would be reduced from 70 to 35, but that would still provide adequate parking. The petitioner submitted the revised site plan with additional landscaping elements. The plans show the sides and rear of the proposed warehouse garage would have eight feet of mulch surrounding a two-foot walkway. The southeast and southwest corners of, show a mix of dwarf white pine and baby blue spruce trees with additional baby blue spruce trees along the rear of the property and both corners of the warehouse, front corners of the warehouse. The petitioner must, or excuse me, the petitioner has also, has not provided a lighting plan, but on some of the previous drawings were noted that there were LED floodlight fixtures that were later added on the site plan over the garages, and the site plan shows sconce lighting at each garage door. One thing to note, there is no dumpster shown on the site plan. The elevation plans show the four 10-by-9 steel overhead garage doors, each with a separate steel door to the right. The building would be constructed with CMU and a metal coping along the top of the building, and the exterior is proposed to be painted, but no color is listed on the plans. With that, Mr. Chair, I also have correspondence to read.
Okay, if you can read that out, please.
From the Engineering Division, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcel is assigned the addresses of 29441 through 29443 Six Mile Road with the addresses of 29441 Six Mile Road being assigned to the overall parcel. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main as well as private stormwater sewer. Utility information has not been submitted with the drawings, but we do not believe there will be any adverse effects from the proposed project. Three, per the original site plans, the layout of the proposed garage is located over the top of a private 15-inch storm sewer that drains the subject parcel and the parcel to the east. The storm sewer will need to be relocated outside of any proposed footing, or the garage layout will need to be revised. Four, once approvals have been received, the owner will need to submit engineering drawings to this department to determine what permits will be required." This is signed, Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Marshal, "The office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct a commercial building on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. What exactly is being stored, manufactured, or for retail in this warehouse garage? A further detailed review will take place when the division receives an official plan set." Signed, Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal." Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Pursuant to your request from the Inspection Department, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, this property is currently in violation of the storage, for storage of a recreational vehicle and unlicensed inoperable vehicle on site. This department has no further objections to the petition." Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspections. And finally, from the Treasurer's Office, "All taxes have been paid on this property." Signed, Susan Nash, Livonia City Treasurer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Banjero.
Mr. Chair. Jacob, do we know if the vehicle violation has been resolved?
I do not know if it's been resolved.
Okay.
No.
No? Okay.
It belongs to my tenant, and he's being evicted. And I even have text messages from him promising that RV will be removed on the 12th.
Okay. And then with regard to the, well, we can, I can wait till you're up. And then on the plan, were we talking about a 20-foot buffer in the back, and now it's showing?
The ordinance requires a 20-foot buffer, but there is language that allows for City Council and Planning Commission to make, you know, adjustments, so it does not, it can also take into account the buffering on the other side of the neighboring property.
Okay. So he's requesting 10?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You guys are just ruining the flow of my meeting.
I know.
Any other questions for planning staff? Okay. All right. Now the petitioner is up. Good evening, sir. Would you like to start with your name and address, please?
My name is Rich Neiman, and I'm currently the owner of 6 Mid Plaza, and what we're proposing over here basically will clean up that whole area over there, and a lot of this stuff will go into the storage area. As far as the recreational vehicle and abandoned vehicle, the van that didn't have plates on belonged to the same tenant that owns the RV, and he was supposedly permitted by the city to use that RV temporarily as an office because we had wind damage when we had that big storm that hit the area on August 28th, I think it was from last year. And he had some damage in the front of his building, and we replaced the roof up there and, because it got uplifted with the wind, but we replaced the roof. And I, right after that, since October, I've been sending him messages that you need to remove that RV, you need to remove that RV, and finally, I had to get some legal counsel, you know, and so we're taking him to court actually on June 25th. But his RV, from his text messages, is supposed to be moving out on the 12th of June, so a couple of days, hopefully.
Okay. Excellent. I'm going to go see if there's any questions for you. Mr. Banjero?
Just to follow up on that, the 20-foot... Just, just to follow up on that, the twenty-foot buffer in the rear, are you looking to do ten feet now?
Yes.
Okay. So if you do, if you move it back to ten, does that get you out of the way of that storm sewer that the building's gonna be on top of, or do you still have to move it?
No, the storm sewer will be right in front of one of the garages, okay, but the...
Nobody talked that you had to move it.
Well, the one, the one in the front, we're moving it just because it's, we're not gonna build on top of it, actually. We're missing it by a couple feet, but still too close to, to the front of the proposed building. So, we're gonna move it further up, you know.
Okay. I just, at the study meeting, we had talked, you were twenty feet back, so if you move it to ten, that gives you, that's bringing you ten feet further back. So I don't know if that clears the...
No, was, from, originally, it was ten foot.
Okay. My notes just said you were gonna go twenty, but...
I think we discussed the twenty being the requirement.
Okay.
This is just a more detail of what was presented.
Gotcha, I gotcha. Okay. So you're still got, you still have to go through all that. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent, very good. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Yeah, I've got some, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. The, let's start with the parking. Jacob, how much parking is actually required on this site?
Offhand, I would have to redo the math. I can do that if you've got...
The reason I ask is, the parking is illustrated here on these plans. Looking parking bumper to bumper, east to west, is that, was that what I'm seeing here?
Yeah, parallel parking.
Parallel parking the whole way, which is, which is difficult, and if you don't need this much parking, why would you, why would you use that kind of parking on this property? It just doesn't seem, doesn't seem like it, it's, it's needed if you don't need as much parking.
That, that would be a question for my architect, I guess. He come, came up with that plan. I thought, I thought just keeping the parking the way it was, okay, would be sufficient, because we don't need that much parking. We, we have like seventy spaces right now, as it is.
It seems, seems excessive. So the next question I had with, with that, I thought, well, are you gonna park that dump truck and trailer in there? And is that why you want them long parking spots east-west?
No, the dump truck is, that's why these are being built thirty-foot deep, so it can slide in there, in, in the, in the storage.
Okay. Just looks like, it looks like excessive parking to me. And then getting in and out of your building, what am I looking at here? Sixteen, eighteen feet between the parking spaces and the door, which doesn't leave you a lot of room to get a piece of equipment in and out of there.
Right.
Looks, looks tight. Doesn't look, doesn't look practical to me. So, that's one question I had for you. The next question I had was no dumpster enclosure. Now, between your front building and this building, you got over twelve-thousand square feet of building here with no dumpster enclosure. I think it's probably time to put a proper dumpster enclosure here.
We can, we can do that. Reason, over the years, we haven't done the dumpster enclosure because we have the curb service.
No, I understand, but now, now you're over twelve-thousand square feet here. So, between two buildings, not counting the, the, the other three or four in the front. So I think it's time to, to, to make this a true commercial property with, with a dumpster enclosure. So I'd like to see something like that put here. And then my last question for you is the sign in front where it says shooter service, that plywood sign?
Yeah, that's...
What's the plan with that? Because that's unfinished plywood.
Right.
Sitting in what looks like hell.
We redid the front of the building a few years ago.
Yeah.
We put stone on the facade on the front, and we were gonna use the same stone to cover that pylon, but unfortunately, we don't have enough square footage of that stone. So we're, we're just waiting to put another, you know, similar stone on there, basically. That's gonna be stoned.
How, how long do you wait for that? You've got exposed plywood with no finish on it at all there. What, that's gonna go to hell fast.
Well, that plywood is womanized. It's not regular plywood. It's, it's weatherproof. So, I agree with you.
It's not slightly at all.
Right. It, it looks ugly, correct.
Yeah. That needs attention, too. So we need something in the, in the write-up to, to get that taken care of in a timely fashion, in my opinion. So those are the concerns I've got, and I'm willing to hear whatever else we get.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Is there any other questions or comments from any of our commissioners? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman, I note that on the site plan that I have on my screen, but evidently not on the screen you're looking at, the mulched area to the south of the building and the east and west of the building shows some landscaping. Jacob, have we received a landscape plan with this now?
Not an official landscape, but they did add the trees on that, if you can see, in the mulched area. Mulched area, it's kinda hard to see on here, but that's where the spruce and white pines are.
Yeah, I see that.
So it's not an official landscape plan, but it does have the trees identified and their locations. I zoomed in here on the screen.
And do we reference this landscaping anywhere in the resolutions?
Not at the resolutions. This landscape came in after the, the details of this landscape came in after the...
Okay, great. Thank you. And also, in our notes at the, at the study session, there were questions about the drainage in the parking lot and the condition of the parking lot. Parking lot is a patchwork of different surfaces at different ages and different conditions, and I can only imagine the construction activity that you do back there to build your new building will be, have another deteriorating effect. Are you planning on repaving the entire thing and restriping the entire thing?
We are. We're planning on, like, putting another cap on it.
Cap on it?
Yeah.
And then, finally, we also had some notes about lighting. And Jacob, did we get a lighting plan with this?
No.
Do we know that this conforms in any way, or that it complies with the requirements?
Not with any strict detail, no.
Spicacious, yeah.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Ventura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from any of the commissioners for our petitioner? Mr. Uhazie?
Just one thing to note, Mr. Karen Magno's question, the ordinance requires twenty-eight parking spaces, so there's more than sufficient, even just in the front mostly, with a couple in the back.
So there's, there's some opportunity to reconfigure that back lot a little bit?
They have significant excess, so...
Yeah, there's a big opportunity there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the most unusual layouts of parking I've seen in a long time.
Yes.
All right, good. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the issue? Nope. Ms., our go-to petitioner, is there anything else that you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Not really. It was just, we appreciate it if we can work together and get this done. And as far as for the lighting that we were talking about, we're, we're gonna use floodlights coming off of the building, you know, onto the parking lot. And we're getting rid of that one DTE that they use, you know, the old bulbs, you know, that'll be gone, because right now, that's all there's in that parking lot. But we're gonna put, like, four floodlights on, on that parking lot, so.
Okay.
It will be lit up. We wanted to light it up because, again, we had break-ins into the bridal, into the, and not anything stolen, just destructive, you know. Just, so, we have cameras back there, but still, you know, last one, he broke in and he hid in the church.
Okay. Yeah, the, what you'll probably hear is some discussion around, as we proceed with this, is we certainly understand your need for lighting for security reasons, but we also wanna make sure that the lighting is not excessive to the point that it shines beyond your property and that type of thing. That's why we have standards. So, we don't want, you know, daylight back there.
No, me and the guy next door, Chris, from Functional Floors, were working out the detail of that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll see how things proceed. I appreciate your comments, and I'm gonna go back to the commission. And if there's no other further questions or comments, a motion would be in order. Mr. Ventura?
Chairman, I'm gonna offer an approving resolution. At the request to construct forty-one hundred and sixty-four square-foot warehouse garage at Six Mile Mid Plaza at 29441 Six Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as Sheet C101 dated May second, 2025, as revised, prepared by HBB Design Collaborative, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Which site plan shall be identical to the one submitted to the Planning Commission at tonight's meeting. Number two, that the site plan identified as Sheet A201 dated May second, 2025, as revised, prepared by HBB Design Collaborative, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to with the same addendum to number two as number one. Number three, that the use of the warehouse garage shall not be open to the public and only accessible to property owners and their tenants. Number four, all storage shall be clearly incidental to the conduct of the permitted use on the site and limited to the storage of business items only. Storage of business items only. Number five, that the parking spaces shown in the site plan shall be double striped, including provision of barrier-free parking, and all regular parking spaces shall be ten feet wide by twenty feet in length as required. Number six, that there should be no outdoor storage of auto parts, scrap material, waste, petroleum products, junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles or other similar items in connection with this operation. Number seven, there should be no storage of flammable, explosive, radioactive, hazardous, toxic, or volatile substances within the warehouse garage or upon the premises. Number eight, no unit designed or intended for storage purposes shall be used for operating a business or recreational activity, including, but not limited to repairs, manufacturing, assembly, personnel service, hobby, retail, or office. Number nine, the only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number ten, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles shall be designed, vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motors shall be prohibited. Number eleven, that the warehouse garage building's exterior wall design, texture, and color shall match that of the existing building to the satisfaction of the Planning Director. Number twelve, that the plan referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department. Number thirteen, pursuant to Section thirteen dot thirteen, Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless approved, appropriate permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. Number fourteen, I'd like the Planning Department to add to this resolution the provisions that we normally attach to any landscaping plan with regard to irrigation and maintenance and et cetera. I'd also like to note in number fifteen, that the petitioner has represented that he's going to repave and restripe the parking lot once the new construction is completed. And number sixteen, and I'm gonna defer to Mr. Karen Magno here for language relative to the addition of a dumpster on site.
Yeah, I'd like to see probably something, as we always talk about, that it's, that it's complimentary to the building that's being built in a, in a satisfactory area for the truck to access, you know, in line with the, with the planning, with the director.
Okay, so a dumpster enclosure should be provided that matches the building and placed in an appropriate location for...
Sure. No, no overhead obstruction, straight shot on the dumpster where you can get to it, gates, gates that are high quality.
Okay, yep.
Finally, number seventeen, that a lighting plan be submitted or added to the plan that is reviewed by the Planning Department and receives the Planning Department approval.
Okay. Anything else?
That's, I think I'm done here.
The, only, only thing I have on my list is some reference to, to the plywood sign, if we wanna...
I would advise you to make that amendment.
Okay. So, we're gonna add something along the lines of, that the plywood sign...
It needs either, needs, either brought up to, brought up to code or taken down or something. It just, it's just exposed plywood, looks like hell.
Okay. And so we have a, a motion that's been made to approve with a number of additions and adjustments to it. Is there support for that?
I'll support that.
All right. So we have a motion made by Mr. Ventura. It's supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is everybody clear on all the corrections, adjustments, and additions that have been added? No questions from anyone?
I, I do have a question regarding the, the amount of parking. If you're gonna recap the, the parking lot, should that, should that parking be reduced to a reasonable amount and parked more properly than this parallel parking on the back of this property?
Is the maker, does he agree with that?
Sure. Are you suggesting, Mr. Karen Magno, that that be worked out with the Planning Department?
With the Planning Department, yeah. Something more, something more appropriate in that parallel parking.
I'm amenable to that.
It just doesn't, it, it, I, I've never seen anything like this. So, I think conventional parking needs to be considered there.
Would it be appropriate for number fifteen to be repaved and restripped to the satisfaction of the Planning and Inspection Departments?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that would encompass everything. One, one, one quick sentence. It's like you've done this before, Mr. Uhazie. And the, the supporter's okay with that as well, right?
Totally.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on this approving petition, or this approving motion? No other questions? If there's no other questions, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura votes aye. Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Wills Shaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with an approving resolution. We wish you luck with your project. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. I take it you're gonna email me that list?
Yeah, you're gonna get a list.
I was trying to, I was trying to, you know, I got a bad finger and I couldn't, I couldn't keep up.
Yeah, we'll make sure you get a list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. That takes care of the regular items on our agenda. We now move on to approval of minutes, Mr. Secretary.
Approval of the minutes of the fourth, four-hundred-and-seventeenth special meeting held, held by the Planning Commission on June third, two thousand twenty-five.
Let's see what we got on this one. The special meeting, everyone was here except for Mr. Long and Ms. Denaro. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Ventura, supported by?
Support.
Mr. Bonjero. And if there's no objection, I think we can show four on that with Mr. Long abstaining. And I do wanna note that the special, and thank you for that, though. We'll mark that as approved. I do wanna note that was the, the special meeting is the election of our officers, an annual process that we have to do, and all officers are remaining in their current positions. I do appreciate everyone's volunteerism for those positions. So, next, we have the approval of another set of minutes.
And that is the one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirtieth public hearing, a regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
And all members were present with the exception of Mr. Karen Magno and Mr. Bonjero, which puts us down to three people left to vote.
I'll move.
Support.
Mr. Ventura, and supported by Mr. Long, and...
It's a quorum.
We have a quorum of three of five, I suppose. So if there's no objections, we'll show three on that, with Mr. Karen Magno and Mr. Bonjero abstaining.
Just for clarity, that's Ventura, Wills Shaw, and Long.
We have, yes, correct, all voting aye on that.
Got it.
And the maker was Ventura and the supporter was Long. And that takes care of the regular agenda. Is there any other business to come before the Planning Commission? If there's no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
That's by Bonjero, supported by Long. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show five to adjourn the meeting. No one's objecting. So we will mark this meeting adjourned at seven forty-nine PM. I do wish to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community. And with that, I'm gonna wish a good night to the city of Livonia. Good night.